So, welcome to the Monday, January 29th, 2024, regular meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. This is a hybrid meeting. It's going to be conducted in person and remotely over Zoom. Attendance by planning board members may be in person or in remote, and both types of attendance shall count towards form. This meeting may be broadcast live and recorded on EK. To use Zoom, you need to use the use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application and create an account or use one of the call-in numbers listed on the agenda. You will need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting hybrid meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of this remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members are commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio. Public participants invited to speak by the chair will be in person, on video or on audio. Public participants may joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. There are further instructions on page two of the agenda. So, let's start out with a roll call here. Let's see, we have as far as members. Zygmunt?
Here.
Danielson?
Here.
Okay. Other members, you can have note your presence by saying here.
Wolf, here.
Kid, here.
Kevin, here.
Okay, wonderful. Let's start off with MBTA zoning. We've been discussing MBTA zoning.
Peter, I'm sorry. We have that MBTA zoning at the top of the agenda, just so people can click on it. The first item is actually the.
Okay, you want to start? Okay, you put that down at the bottom. Okay, so let's start with the internally illuminated sign for 690 Depot Street Crispy Crust Pizzeria sign. Is there anyone?
You should be.
Hi.
Here to present this?
Hey, I'm the site contractor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Ricky Zhang, and I'm the site contractor. I'm representing the Crispy Crust Pizzeria. And so the address of the sign is 690 Depot Street is inside the saucepan. We are trying to have the channel letter sign with the waistway, and the total square foot of the sign is 42 square feet. And also, the PVS business is called NY Pizza.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie, did you have any comments on this?
No, it meets all the requirements. And again, as. I'm sorry, Mr.
Zygmunt?
Zhang just said it's channel letters. And.
Yes.
It fits in to the space where. Okay, so I am getting feedback, and I don't know what. It meets the requirements, and it actually is an attractive looking sign.
Yep. Today, other board members?
Ricky Zhang is talking.
Who is talking?
I don't know. Someone is talking. Ricky Zhang is talking.
No, I only say yes.
Yep.
No, I think it's.
Okay. Yeah. Do any board members have any comments on this? Oh?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Oh. Do any board members have any comments on this sign application?
Zhang is a good-looking sign.
It's internally illuminated, correct?
Yes.
It is.
Is this in accordance to regulations, right? If it is raised letters, right?
Yep.
It's okay.
If there are no other questions.
I don't think. Peter, can you see everybody here?
Not that well.
Okay, so I because Amos, you were nodding, and I don't think Peter can see.
Well, I nodded to myself, that's okay.
Okay, Amos, did you make a motion yet?
No, but I can make a motion to approve the sign that's presented.
Second vote.
Okay. All in favor, I'll state your last name and say aye, please, one at a time.
Kevin, aye.
Zygmunt, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Hey, Deshaun, aye. All right, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Zhang.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye. All right. Now, we have a continued public hearing for 523 Foundry Street. Special permanent next to use, but that's being continued to February 12th.
Motion to continue 523 Foundry Street till February 12th?
Kevin, second.
Okay. All in favor, one at a time. State your last name and indicate if you.
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Zygmunt, aye.
All right, Deshaun, aye. That passes. Next, we have continued public hearing, definitive subdivision, special permit residential compound, Nigga Estates, 165 Pine Street, J.K. Holmgren Engineering, Inc.
So, do we have someone from Holmgren's office?
We have two people.
Okay, so I think you need to stop me from sharing so that Scott can share. I'll come over.
Thank you.
All right. While the sharing is being changed, any representatives could state their name and address for the record?
Scott Farrier from Holmgren Engineering, 1024 Pearl Street, Brockton, Mass.
This is Frederick Cassavent from Marioni Shaughnessy and Udi, Two Battery Mark Park, Quincy, Mass.
Okay, welcome to our hybrid meeting.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do any of you have the capability to share your screen? Nope, Scott already has it. All right, great.
Here we go.
Okay, please just start with an update, and we'll take it from there.
Sure, I'll start quick before we get into the any legal issues that we have with this type of a development. But as you folks remember, we're before the Planning and Zoning Board back a couple of months ago. For our first meeting, what we have is a proposed three-lot residential compound at 165 Pine Street, one existing home, two new lots. The plan that you see before you is pretty much unchanged. From our first meeting, we've gone back and forth with the town's air review consultant, Beta, a few times, and we've come up with a few minor changes. Really, the biggest change we made is right over here in the front with our infiltration basin. We shifted it a little bit further away from the lot line, so now it's about 14 feet from the lot line. We also pushed it down towards Pine Street and raised the bottom of the infiltration basin as well, just to ensure, further ensure, that there will be no impact on the abutting home at 169. So now, we're above the basement at 169 and also a little bit ahead of it. So, we feel along with Beta that that would, that that should more than satisfy any possible concerns that we could have there with the neighboring property. In addition to that, we have added a smaller infiltration basin in the back of the property to handle the runoff from the long driveway leading to house number, house on lot number two. So, because we have kind of about a 200-foot-long driveway, the feeling was that added impervious surface could really benefit from having its own infiltration basin. So, we've added that to the side of the basin. The other change that we that we've made, we had discussions with Fire Prevention Officer Green and primarily about the location of the house on lot two and the hydrant on the, within the proposed roadway. We originally had the hydrant over kind of on the northeast side of the cul-de-sac, right about where my cursor is. The Fire Prevention Officer asked us to shift it to the other side of the cul-de-sac, so it would be closer to the three homes. We also shifted, I'm going to try to pan, which always gets tricky. We also shifted the location of the house on lot number two a little bit north, so now it's about 220 feet from the proposed hydrant. So, by pushing the house further north on the lot, shifting the hydrant over, it satisfied the Eastern Fire Department with any concerns that they would have. So, those were really the, I mean, there was a lot of back and forth. Most of it was kind of just engineering calculations back and forth, but those are the substantial changes that anybody would would notice on the plans, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Okay. Thank you. Stephanie, do you have any comments on that?
No, not since the last meeting.
I have a question. Are the abutters participating on this meeting? And the second question, have we heard from the abutters about all this? Have you, the team presenting?
Yes, Mr. Farrier.
Any communication with the abutters?
The abutter, no. I don't know. I think she's. Okay, well, she'll need to raise her hand if she wants to speak. So, Amos, we have had abutters attend the meetings. I don't think that they have had any adverse comments during the previous hearing.
Well, not the board.
Yeah, let's just start without any board members who might have any other questions or comments here, and then we'll move on to the public. Amos, does that, do some of these changes seem to address some of the concerns you had there earlier?
Are you asking me something?
Yes, oh, yeah. Amos, I was asking, I recall that you had questioned the location of that, this, you know, this drainage system along that.
Yeah.
That self-side property.
Yeah, I heard what they say. They raised the infiltration, and that was one of my concern because that basin is so close to the house or the abutter there. And I wanted to hear if the abutters have any comments or, but if there is none. There is one, one abutter is very close to all this road and basin. Actually, I went to the, to that street, and I parked on front to see that myself, and it's pretty close.
Yes, yeah. So, Scott, were you able to move that off the property line at all?
We did, Mr. Chairman. It was, it was, it was closer by about five feet from the last iteration that we had. Right now, we're about 13, almost 14 feet from the lot line. The DEP Stormwater Management Guidelines require it to be 10 feet from the lot line. So, we shifted it over to 14 feet. And even more importantly than the, than the horizontal distance was the raising of the basin. We raised it by about two feet. So, now we're, we're higher than the, than the basement floor of that existing home at 169. And as I said, we pushed it down towards Pine Street. So, we're, the actual basin itself is, is pretty much ahead of the house at 169. So, the, it shouldn't, it won't have any impact on the groundwater and also the surface flow. It's ahead of it, and the basin will end, will continue to drain out towards Pine Street as the existing driveway does currently. So, with this revised design, working things out with Beta, we both feel like there's no adverse impact at all on any of the abutting properties.
And then, when you do your review, does it, do you also consider whether or not the, you know, installation of the roadway affects the drainage patterns towards the road?
Again, that's part of the reason why we, why we need the basin. Right now, currently, there's a driveway going there, but it's only a single driveway, a 10-foot-wide driveway. So, we're, we're tasked with making sure that there is no increase in runoff going not only to the abutters but to the, to the public street. So, that's why the introduction of the infiltration basin, that basin will mitigate for that additional runoff that's introduced by the addition of our 18-foot-wide driveway now as opposed to the existing 10- or 12-foot driveway now. So, that additional impervious area is accounted for in our infiltration basin.
Okay, and if this were to move forward, how would we designate which part is responsible for maintenance of that driveway and the, and the stormwater management?
It's right. We have an operation and maintenance agreement, but as part of this, this type of a subdivision in the zoning bylaw, it's, it's a private road. Everything stays private. There is a homeowners association, so the maintenance of the basin and the roadways is shared amongst the three owners within the residential compound.
And that carries with the deeds?
Yes.
Yeah, Peter, if I could add on that, one of the conditions we always add to a, one of the conditions we always add to a decision for a private road is that they provide a draft copy of the homeowners' association documents so that we can review that, and we have town council review it to make sure that it meets the requirements and provides for the long-term maintenance by the property, the responsible property owners.
Yes.
When not, the maintenance of the basin has to be.
Can you direct to Peter? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The maintenance of the basin has to be included on the maintenance agreement for the association.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, maybe, would this be a good time just to kind of refresh us on any waivers that you're requesting?
Sure, let me. Let me just see what sheet they're on. Trying to find what sheet they're on, Mr. Chairman. If you can bear with me for one second. Attorney Cassavent, do you have that document with you?
Let me take a look.
I have it. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Do you have it? Because I have it in the binder.
Which document on the binder?
In the binder, in my staff report. I should have a list of the waivers.
Yeah, we've just, you know, kind of continued this a few times, so I thought that would be good to review.
Yeah, so I have them listed right here on the plan while we, while we look for them. I think it's the.
I have them right here. So, section 501, 21B, four, dead-end streets. Relief is sought to waive the 30-foot maximum radius on the cul-de-sac pavement. The Fire Department recommends a 45-foot radius. Section 501, 22, sidewalks, relief is sought to eliminate the sidewalk. Section 501, 23H1, monuments and markers. Relief is sought to waive the requirement for 42-inch concrete bounds. All local manufacturers make 36-inch bounds. Section 501, 30C, two water lines. Relief is sought to waive the requirements that there shall be a minimum of two hydrants in any subdivision. The applicant states the justification for this waiver is there is only one home on the 250-foot road. My comment was the subdivision proposes three houses. It was not clear why this warrants a waiver. I believe they addressed that at the last meeting, but I think it warrants being addressed again. And then, the last is section 501, 30C, four water lines. Relief is sought to waive the requirement that there shall be no dead-end water mains. The applicant states the justification for this waiver is the length of the lane and only two homes proposed making, make looping the main impractical. And again, the subdivision proposes three houses in total, so.
Thank you.
Could the applicants comment on any of Stephanie's comments there?
Yeah, I think, I think the one, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to move off of this page. The, I think the one significant waiver that we're asking for is the requirement of two hydrants per subdivision. As I stated previously, we have one hydrant proposed at the end of the cul-de-sac. The second hydrant would obviously be at the entrance or 500 feet away, whichever one would be, would be greater. In our case, it would be at the entrance of Lily Way in Pine Street. And there already is an existing hydrant right down the road about 100 feet. That hydrant from our proposed hydrant is only 300 feet away. All of the houses within our subdivision, the three houses, are all way in the back here. That would be serviced by the one proposed hydrant. We just didn't feel like adding a second hydrant right up at the front of Pine Street really serves any purpose, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman. So, that was our reasoning for it, where that existing hydrant on Pine Street is 100 feet away.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me.
And as I said, we did discuss it with Fire Prevention Officer Green, just to get his feeling on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
That would, that would be my question. Is the Fire Department aware of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so now, can you also remind us, I guess, obviously, you have some clearing to do along the southern side where the stormwater area goes. Are you maintaining some of the existing vegetation on either sides of the driveway?
As much as possible, certainly on the northern side. Because we don't have the drainage facility proposed, there's the ability to save a few more trees. There isn't, it's not, it's really not heavily wooded, you know, this front portion of the property. There is a tree line, an existing tree line between our property and house number 169, which, along the lot line, obviously, on the neighbor's side of the property, their, their trees, I'm sure, would, would stay as a buffer and will keep as many of the trees as possible during construction for our purposes. In the back, around the existing home at 165, they have, you know, a good-sized backyard that's already, that's already cleared, and there'll be some additional clearing for the construction of the two homes.
Okay, thanks.
Peter, if I may point out, on the revised Plan Sheet 6, C6, it does show a new kind of limit of clearing. And it looks like, is that a fence along? So, on the south side?
That's the, along this side. That's the erosion control, actually.
Okay, that, the, the thing that looks kind of like a fence is the erosion control.
Correct.
And then, that vegetation is the limit of clearing that will be retained?
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there is some additional vegetated buffer that exists, Peter, on the subject parcel.
Correct.
Yes, and I think Mr. Farrier indicated that some of those are on the, on the neighbor's property and some are on the subject property?
That's correct.
And you, your, I guess, your, your tree, your site work people, will be instructed to, to preserve some of those, the trees on your property?
We will certainly stake out the, the property lines prior to construction as well as staking out the drainage basins to make sure that we save as many as possible, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, maybe could you maybe contact the office when you have that staked out so that at least someone could drive by and see that it's there and see what you're talking about?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. As far as, I guess, we're calling landscaping, our vegetation buffers, do any other board members or, have any comments? Or Stephanie?
Nope.
No, and I think in my report, I indicate, I know in my report, I indicate that the peer reviewer has found that the stormwater design is compliant with DEP stormwater standards.
Okay. Right, and then, as far as lighting, I know we did talk about that briefly. What do you have for us to say, lighting in the front at the roadway and then going along the driveway?
All we have with, with this type of a roadway, all we have are the three lanterns at the end of, of each of the driveways, Mr. Chairman, proposed, basically at the, at the end of the, at the end of the subdivision, heading towards Pine Street. It'll just be the, the existing street lighting on Pine Street.
Okay, thank you. Do the board members have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we can open this to the public.
We don't see anyone from the public raising their hand online. There's no one from the public raising their hand in the audience.
Okay. Stephanie, do you feel like we need any more information here before we?
I don't. I think they have answered all the questions.
Okay, and those board members here in attendance have been present at the required.
Yes.
Meetings.
Or, or met the Mullen requirement.
Okay, so that case.
Sorry, Peter. This is a special permit for the residential compound, so you'll need to vote to grant the waivers, and then you'll need to vote for the residential compound, and that is a supermajority, so you need four.
Yes, yes, well, first, we'd close the public hearing, right?
We'll begin hearing first.
Yes, yes. Subdivision, no, it's a subdivision. It is, the compound is a subdivision.
Do you need a motion?
Sorry, I hear some chatter there, so let's see what, what's the chatter about?
Suzanne had a question. Amos, do you want to direct that, your comment to the chair?
Well, yeah, I wanted to ask if we put a motion to close public hearing, something that you need to ask the applicant if this is agreeable to him?
Yep. We typically do.
Please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, please.
Motion to close a public hearing for a definite subdivision special permit for Nigga Estates.
Second, Wolf.
Okay. All in favor, one at a time, last name and whether or not you agree?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Okay, Deshaun, aye.
Zygmunt, aye.
Yeah, all right, that passes.
Do we need a motion for the waivers now, for the permit?
Yeah, the waivers.
Collectively or individually?
All right. You can do them collectively or individually.
Motion for collective waivers for the permit for definitive subdivision 165 Pine Street?
Kid, second.
All in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Zygmunt, aye.
All right, Deshaun, aye.
Final motion to approve it?
Yep, with any of the conditions that we talked about.
I guess it's my turn.
Your turn.
Motion to approve the definitive subdivision, special permit residential compound, Nigga Estates.
Kevin, second.
Any discussion? Yes, with the conditions that we reviewed. Suzanne, do you have those? Stephanie, do you have those recorded?
Yep, I think it was the, so this standard condition of the, that they submit a draft of the homeowners' association documents to us prior to commencing work so that it can be reviewed and submitted to town council for review. And then, the second was that they stake out, I identify, stake out the limit of work along abutting property line consistent with the vegetation line shown on the revised plan.
Okay.
Maybe specifically include maintenance.
Maintenance on the homeowners, yes, it does, yes.
Okay, there is a second for approval. Start with it, all in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
All right, I'm having technical difficulties. Zygmunt, aye.
Okay, and Deshaun, aye. All right, that passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a good night.
You're welcome.
Good luck. Thank you. Good night.
See, next, we have 388 Depot Street, Granite City Partners, A&amp;R Plan. Do we have anyone in person or remote in presence for this?
We do, Peter, so just bear with me.
We do, Peter, so just bear with me a moment.
Suzanne, can you stop for a minute, I think that might be what the delay is.
Oh, oh, that's why I'm sorry.
You, I'll set. Oh my goodness, sorry, I don't know what is causing this to happen. There we go.
Okay.
Looks like we have a plan on this green now.
And I have a pointer. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Holly Roach Robinson of Granite City Partners, we're a real estate and engineering consulting firm, applying on behalf of the town of Easton to subdivide the land at 388 Depot Street via an approval not required process. The parcel at 388 Depot Street is the parcel that the center school currently sits on, and the intent of this subdivision is to create a parcel for the Yardley Wood rink, so that that can remain as a separate town asset, should the town choose to dispose of or sell the land, the remaining land that the center school sits on. The parcel as it sits now is about 13 acres, a little over 13 acres, and as shown on the plan, we are allocating about one and a half acres for the Yardley Wood rink parcel, or Lot Two, and the remaining parcel of Lot One would be just under 12 acres. The Lot Two, the Yardley rink parcel, would still have frontage and public access off of Depot Street, and the town would also be able to access it off of the adjacent school street if needed for maintenance, but again, public access would remain off of Depot. I believe that might be about it, if you have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead.
May I ask that you have Holly, if she could just use the pointer, the laser pointer for folks in the room here, and just circle the Yardley rink parcel? Does it show up on the, it's bouncing off the screen?
Yeah, I can, I can just stand up here, I think, so the Yardley rink parcel is highlighted right here, so this is Lot Two, and then the remainder would be Lot One, which is where the center school sits today.
I have a question, about the drainage of the Yardley Wood rink, what is this water going, and what is the relationship to the rest of the Lot Number Two?
Yeah, I think we can ask a few kind of questions like that, but remember, this is just as far as separating the land, right, so an approval not required plan is more about just kind of breaking the land up, not necessarily like a site plan review where we'd ask, you know, kind of other questions, but I have a few questions along similar lines, but maybe not to that level of detail. However, Stephanie, how does this property drain, does it drain towards the new detention basin on the edge there?
I believe so, but I don't, Joe, do you know, we have Joe, Joe, if you want to introduce yourself, you need to use, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Joseph Shea, I'm Holly's business partner at Granite City Partners, also a registered civil engineer. The Yardley ice rink, as we understand it, is a lined pond, it's a kettle pond, however, it also has the opportunity to overflow through the new retention area and drainage easement that the city, the town worked on several years ago. So as part of carving off Lot Two, it was intentionally done to keep all of the stormwater components associated with the ice rink all in the same parcel, and not co-mingle stormwater from the larger Lot One and the Yardley rink parcel.
Yeah, and I can imagine if any development were to happen on the larger lot, then that would require its, well, we could find a way for it to kind of operate as a self-contained entity as far as stormwater is concerned.
Right, any new development, yes, any new development at that lot would need to be in compliance with the DEP stormwater management guidelines.
Okay, Amos, does that help you understand how that works?
Yes, answered the question and open a few more.
Well, you have a few more relevant to this approval not required plan, then, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the chair is recognizing the board and is recognizing Amos, right, were you right?
Yes, yeah, Amos, did you have more questions?
No, that's all.
Okay, so I just, you know, I saw that we're including some of the parking spots in the separated Yardley plot, I think there were, were there eight there that we counted?
That's correct, and we did also do some concepts where some reconfiguration of those lot, those parking spaces, you could fit up to 12 spaces as well if needed.
Okay, and I suppose the access eventually would remain on some sort of easement for the new larger lot?
That would be, yes, yes, Peter, that would be worked out at the time responsive proposal came to the town, and negotiations on what that would look like, that would include that as well, access for the public to the rink.
Stephanie, do you have other comments on this, or board members?
I don't have any other comments.
Are there any members of the public, remote or in person, that have a question?
Dale has a question.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street, I'm speaking to this both individually and as the lead on behalf of the Lions, for those who don't know, the Lions Club have entered into a licensing agreement for the use of Yardley Wood rink, we just entered into it recently with Connor, and I can speak to a couple of issues, first of all, on the drainage, there is an existing drainage plug, so when the rink is no longer necessary for skating at the end of the season, we open up the plug, it is on the corner, if you're on Depot Street, I think it's School Street there, over in that corner, there's actually a PVC pipe where we open it up and then let the water drain, and then usually in November, we put the plug back in in order to get sufficient water for skating. So I don't know how that impacts what you're talking about for drainage, but we want to make sure that for continued use of the rink, the fact that water is being let out periodically after the conclusion of the skating season, that doesn't create any problems for the adjoining property, whatever its use may be. I'm most interested in the issue about parking, and if I heard correctly, I think there was some discussion about the possibility of an easement for additional parking spaces, I don't know if I heard that correctly, but when you have a nice day for skating, we had about a week's worth of skating recently, there are well more than eight cars over there, it's a very, very popular area when we have cold weather for skating, it's our own little bit of Norman Rockwell here in Easton, and I'd want to make sure that, consistent with the intended public meeting when this issue was raised about the rink, that we're taking into account that there'd be sufficient access for the public, places to park for the kids and other folks to have a safe skating place, so when you're addressing the parking configuration, I would suggest if it's possible to have greater numbers of spots, you mentioned, I think there might be, you can configure, so you're going to have 12, and ideally, you know, there are occasions in which there are materially more than 12 cars parking there when you have good skating on a Saturday, so if there's any way that this can be done so as to account for the additional parking needs, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, the way I'm looking at this is that it's an approval not required, not a site plan review, you know, the town owns this entire property, so just as like, in talking about the actual access easement to the, to lot itself, there, you know, there's a lot that we don't know about what will eventually happen here, you know, with the larger Lot One, I can imagine there would be some sort of, maybe like a shared parking arrangement, but I don't, I don't think that they're, kind of the plans for Lot One are all that, all that concrete at this time, so, and at the same time, I'm not sure, I mean, Stephanie, I don't feel, I don't really see where we could just kind of like add more space here for parking, especially if we're considering this kettle pond, and maybe there'd be some wetland considerations to go along with that.
Right, there are definitely some wetlands to the south there, and I don't know if the, I can't remember if the lot, the way it's carved out, includes the wetlands?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I kind of, the way, okay, I kind of feel like we have to think of this as a good first step.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot more work to be done, but I, at the same time, I, I actually share kind of Dale's, you know, I felt the original sentiment that the rink should be kind of set aside so that it continued to be used, right, and there are a bunch, a lot of other issues that will have to be ironed out over, as the develop, any development kind of unfolds.
Right, so the lot was to be carved off with, with the parking immediately adjacent to the skating rink, and it's my understanding that when, again, a responsive proposal is made to the town for reuse of the site, that the town will negotiate for shared parking, and the presumption being, I mean, Dale mentions that it gets very busy, that its busiest times are probably later in the day and on weekends, rather than the middle of the day, but that is something that would be taken into consideration with any proposal.
Board members, do you have a comment, should we open this up to any other members?
Peter, we have, we have one other.
Denise Higgins, for New Pond Way. I hadn't come to address this, but I live on New Pond, and we had skating about two weeks ago, we had probably about 30 cars that filled both ends of the parking and all along Foundry Street, created quite a hazard during that time period. My question is, are we in a position where we need to do a formal subdivision of this fee simple right now, or can it be subdivided and when the next, when the user of the next, the larger lot comes forward, that that can be finalized then? The reason why I'm saying that is I would love to be able to shave more parking, or to be able to make sure that parking is suitable for this one singular, because that's the only purpose that it serves, Yardley rink and skating.
Peter, may I respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the division of the land is being done in accordance with the town meeting vote, and it, this, it does need to be done in order to be able to dispose of the property. That's, please address your questions to the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so it ultimately, as I understand it, the town's going to be required to put up for approval, whatever that potential sale is, it's going to come back to town meeting, I would just suggest whether it's now or at a later point in time, the more you take into account how important the rink is and sufficient access in terms of parking for the rink, the more, the greater your likelihood is that whatever you're putting forward for that proposal will get approved, it's easy, you know, as folks may remember from the town meeting when this came up, it was some folks who cared very deeply about the rink, who were concerned that the rink might be lost by virtue of voting in favor of that, this proposal to put out for bid, this property, so I'm just trying to suggest whether it's now, later engineering, it's just, when ultimately it goes before town meeting, it's a lot easier now to increase the likelihood that that gets approved, because there's a very vocal contingent of a lot of folks who feel very strongly about the rink, and the more you've taken into account the parking needs for the rink, I think you're going to have more folks on board when that ultimate vote comes down, so just a suggestion, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So the question is, more parking that probably is shown here on this plan, and easement for the ability to get to this parking, because we don't know what is going to happen with this property, and it can be developed in a way in which will not be access and easement, and it will negate the parking, that's my understanding, if we don't do something now, at least put this in words, if not on the plan, that additional or maximum, maximize the parking, and add a requirement for easement to that parking on future plans.
Yeah, we'd really have to think about how that could even be accomplished with an A&amp;R plan?
Yeah, Peter, I think Joe Shea wants to speak, and he is, again, from Granite City Partners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, our understanding at Granite City Partners and the mission that we were given after the town meeting vote to carve off the Yardley rink for the purposes of preparing a parcel for a qualifications-based disposition, was that this was step one, such that the town could then prepare through the Board of Selectmen, who would be the entity responsible for disposition of land, to put together a package of a qualifications-based advertisement where redevelopers or reusers would put together a proposal for the reuse of the site, and the select board as that committee can put whatever criteria they would like within that package, so criteria such as a reuse in harmony with the neighborhood, a shared parking agreements to a certain number of spaces, is that that disposition step that, that many of the solid ideas and honest, straightforward concerns we're hearing tonight get materialized under the disposition agreement? I do want to be clear that at no point have we ever been told that this property would be bid, such that somebody gives a price and does what they want, it would be a most advantageous or highly advantageous qualifications-based selection, where the applicants must propose what they intend to do, and by being awarded the property, they are now locked into those proposals, such as a shared parking agreement, maybe even some stormwater agreements, or easements for the purposes of passing over the property. So there is, I want to just be clear, tonight's goal is the subdivision of the land as directed at town meeting, there'll be multiple other steps on, with the platforms to address many of these very reasonable concerns.
So my question is, how this concern, these points, get to whoever is going to kick this forward?
It's already been expressed at town meeting, the select board is well aware of the concerns, because it was brought up at town meeting, and as Joe just pointed out, that it will be a qualifications-based disposal of the property, so the RFP will go out with indicating what the requirements are, what the qualifications are for a responsive proposal that include access to the rink and likely shared parking to the rink.
And what is the formal way in which this concern, these points, get forward to whoever?
So the town, again, just by the fact that Joe is aware- So the, the town, again, just by the fact that Joe is aware that this is a qualifications-based, the select board and the town administrator know that these are qualifications that need to be incorporated into a, any, a responsive proposal.
So it's your responsibility to kick this forward?
It's the town administrator and the select board's responsibility.
It isn't. We would be happy to bring them forward based upon the feedback received here tonight.
Thank you.
Amos, does that help you? Or do you have other ideas here?
No, that's good.
All right. So if there are any other, any other new comments that have not been raised yet?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Peter, can you hear Denise Higgins?
Yes. Yep. Go ahead.
Denise, if you could stand up to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just thinking as, as this is materializing. Excuse me. My follow-up question is, I was at the town meeting when this was happening. And I think that this was something that evolved, was not intentional, because it was a disposition of the center school, but it was an afterthought at the town meeting that we tried to reserve that portion known as Yardley rink. And I think that it was an amendment on the fly, if, if I remember correctly. And so my question is, was it one acre? I'm not, I'm trying to recall if you remember what the-
60,000 square feet.
60,000 square feet.
So what was set aside? Because I, I pulled out the amendment when I reviewed the, the submittal. And what they're providing is what was required by the amendment.
Amendment. So I think that the intention of the person who put forth the amendment was pretty clear to save Yardley rink, but was hopeful that that 60,000 would in fact give and provide adequate parking. But I don't know that anyone could contemplate or could calculate the size of a car and translate it into eight parking or 12 parking spaces. So here's my question. I know that we're, we're responsible to do it as part of town meeting, but this is, right now in totality, the, the ownership of the town of Easton. And it's, it's a thought process that when we give, when we create these two fee simple parcels, that we limit ourselves now to what we have now created. And-
Yeah. So let's do this. Well, let's put this off for, till the next meeting. Stephanie and the engineers can just get a little more information together.
Peter, if I may, it's, as you pointed out, it is an A and R plan.
Yeah. But there are some good points here. And I'm, you know, I'm one of the people that emailed some people in town about making sure that Yardley stayed together. And I guess, you know, if that didn't happen until an amendment on the floor, then I think this at least warrants another, another couple of weeks' time to get these answers on-
Peter, may I?
Answer a little more clarity. Yep. Is it your end?
So just, just a clarification to make sure I understand our role in this process. My understanding of an A and R is as long as there's enough frontage on a main road-
Denise?
You can't-
Could we please, in-
Thanks, Stephanie.
I'm sorry, we-
Yep. So my, sorry. Okay, sorry. So I just wanted to get some clarification on our role in this process as a planning board. My understanding is that because this is an A and R, and it has the frontage needed along a main road, we can't really, all we can really do is accept or deny it. We can't really change any of what's being proposed.
I think-
Is that correct?
Yes, you're correct. For the most part, but maybe in the spirit of things here, and in the spirit of, you know, we could look at this a little bit differently as well. So I don't see there any major harm here in just, just getting a little more information so that everyone feels comfortable. But yeah, you're probably right. You know, I just suppose the Board of Selectmen could sue us if they, if they choose, if they don't want to, maybe just get a little more information for everyone.
I just, I have a, I have a quick question about, if you don't approve it, the town can still go forward, was it correct, though? This, like, word in the, the town administrator? Like, what we do here is not-
Again, the board is, the board has to endorse an A and R plan that meets the requirements. And in fact, if it didn't, the board still would need to endorse it. They would, could indicate, again, let's say it didn't have the frontage, if it didn't have enough frontage, they could indicate that it didn't have adequate frontage, or it's not a developable lot. But the board can't deny it. The board does have to endorse the plan so that it can be recorded.
I think my question is that the questions that are, the comments that are coming here are fantastic, but I don't know necessarily that we're the right space word right now. It's more directed towards the select board, more directed to the town administrator to make sure that they hear these concerns and they go on the RFQ. Not that-
Right.
-we delay a decision, because that doesn't, essentially, that's kind of, it doesn't do anything. But-
Yes. Yeah, yeah. You enjoy it, correct? Right? I mean, that's how I started off here. And we kind of entertained some, you know, various comments and questions about that kind of, a little bit bigger than just an A and R itself. I'm sure if, you know, anyone here, you know, understood, you know, exactly how the A and R works, that we don't really have any leeway to just, to deny this. But, so it's up to you guys. I mean, you guys can make a motion now, or we could just wait a couple of weeks for a little more information to maybe make everyone feel a little more comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard briefly again?
Yes.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I, I understand what you're saying. I think, you know, that on the A and R and the process, my comments are really directed to the town as being the proponent of that A and R now. So the town who's putting this forward, I think, could put it back, pull it back for two weeks until some of these other concerns are addressed. And I did attend, you know, I'm one of the lead volunteers over the rink, keeping that open. And we have a committed group of volunteers. We had a meeting a few weeks back doing our planning for the, the maintenance of the rink going forward. And I can tell you, nobody knew how many parking spots would or would not be included in this, and this was done on the fly. And again, whether they can do something different at this point or not, I don't know. But it's really just a recommendation to the town, because at the end of the day, you want to have whatever the proposal is that goes forward after you put out your requests for bids and so forth to ultimately be approved, or whatever the requirement is. And easier to take those into account now, rather than at a later point in time. So again, my, my comments are really directed to whoever is, as the town is putting this forward, this proposal, to consider, you know, postponing that for a period, a short period of time to address some of these concerns, whether this adequately takes into account the parking. Because again, the Yardleywood rink folks, it's a huge asset in town. A lot of folks are motivated by it. And if you don't address that, you run the risk, I think, at some folks at town meeting or whatever, that approval process will come out against whatever you're proposing as the, the use ultimately of that property. And, and just as a general matter for goodwill. I mean, it's, it's a huge asset in town. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. So Amos, what would you like to do, Amos? Do you want to make a motion? Would you refer a motion to endorse this approval of the plan?
I would say endorse with the condition that the, the issues that were raised today, especially about parking and access to the parking is, is being addressed.
Two motions then. Yeah. We can't make a condition-
It's going to be addressed.
Yep. Okay, hold on. We can't, we can't make a, we can't approve an A and R with a condition.
Then, then I, I'm sorry, then I will need to deny.
So Peter, can I make a suggestion to Amos?
Yeah, sure.
What you could do is vote to endorse, and with the condition that you're going to convey the concerns raised tonight to the select board, who will be-
That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
On the proposal.
Acceptable, yeah.
Good. All right. Amos, did you make that motion?
Motion to endorse the A and R, A and R plan as proposed.
Second, Wolf.
Okay. All in favor? One at a time, please.
Kid, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Zigman, aye.
DeShane, aye. Good. That passes. And also make the note of the condition, which will be forwarded to the town administration.
And so Peter, what we'll do, in my department, we'll draft a letter for you to review from the board, sharing the concerns to the select board that were raised tonight.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Put that behind us.
Thank you.
Yes.
You all?
Yes.
Are you all good there? Okay. We have community housing zoning, MBA, MBTA communities. I'm sorry, can't be in person. I had some extenuating circumstances, which just made this option better. But I wish I were there. But we'll, we'll get through this, and it's an interesting exercise. So start out. So over the last few weeks, Stephanie and I have been meeting with various board committees to present some of the zoning options we have put together thus far with the board. We met with the, with the Furnace Village neighbors recently. They expressed some of the similar concerns that we've heard over our meetings. So I don't think we need to, Stephanie, we don't need to get into a, a large presentation here. I think we could, you know, review the, some of the zoning map options that we've sort of started to coalesce around over the last couple of weeks. And then if we, if we have time, we can maybe look, start looking at some of the actual bylaw materials themselves.
Yes. Okay. Bear with me one moment. Sorry, we had a waiting in here up until 6 o'clock, so I didn't get my setup time as much as I liked. So let me reopen this.
Yeah. So as I was starting to allude to, I think we're sort of settling on most likely having the, the three zones.
Look for a minute while I do this.
Yeah. The Washington North, the Roach Brothers, the Belmont, Washington, and then also the, the Foundry Eastman at the Target location. But of course, we haven't reviewed this with the other board members, so, oh, that's okay.
We'll just do it from here.
Okay. And let's just, while we work on it's, getting this up on the video, let's remember, you know, let's, we'll speak one at a time. You know, it's a hybrid meeting, but we can all, we can all kind of, and in order. All right. So first, do we have, Stephanie, what do you have? Sort of like the original districts, and then we'll talk about maybe some of the changes that have been, we've reviewed and have been suggested.
Suggested, yes. Yep. Do you want, do you want me to go through it, or do you want to go through it?
Yeah, why don't you give it a shot? And I'll stop, interject at the right time if I need to.
That sounds good. That works. So this is the Foundry Eastman District. And the, right now, the way it was originally configured, we have the Target Development, the, and I'm, I'm going to point to this for anyone who doesn't know. I think the folks in the audience are very familiar with it. We have Tar, Avalon, Target, Highland Plaza. This is now-
Starbucks.
The Starbucks. Well, Starbucks, and I think the new, the new, Starbucks is over here, I think.
It's underneath the Robert Drive.
Right. And, and that's right, right here. And this is the new Avalon structures. This is a warehouse. This is some vacant land and some other commercial use. And we've received a lot of feedback from the folks in the Furnace Village Neighborhood District. And again, we had a good meeting, a productive meeting on Thursday with the neighborhood and the residents. There's a lot of concern that's been expressed about the size of the district. So a lot of consideration has been given in reducing this. The folks we heard from felt, a, a large part of the concern is about the traffic, also that there's a lot of new development going on there, in large part as a result of the new zoning that was adopted by the town a couple of years ago. But there's a lot of construction going on, and they would just like to see that reduced. So what they're suggesting is reducing it down to 30 acres, likely taking out Target, Hanaford, and maybe the warehouse district, the warehouse parcel.
Right. We still need to, it takes some time for Stephanie and the staff to rerun all the numbers in the, in the state formula. So we're, let's, let's start here and see if the board members have any questions about this. Let's, let's stick, we'll, we'll stay with the board members here, and then we'll open this up to the public after we review the, the three zones.
Sounds good. And if I could just mention, in addition to that, what Peter and I have been talking about, and, and the board has been considering over the last few meetings, is also adding those other two districts, or at least a configuration of the other two districts.
We need to comply with the requirements for the amount, the amount of acres that we have.
Yes.
As you recall, yeah. Amos, as you recall, we have, we have plenty of kind of potential lots included in our three districts. And, and we can, we can easily find a way to meet all the requirements using these, the three districts.
Yeah. So in other words, even if you're reducing the, the size of this district, with the other two districts coming along, you can complete the requirements.
Yes.
Yeah. We, we, yeah. If we didn't, if we didn't make any changes to the other two, and we made a few changes here, we'd still have way more, we'd have more space than we need, and more, more numbers, more units. So we have a lot of options here. And so since we've received the majority, or almost all of the feedback regarding this particular zone, it's really the only logical step is to, is to-
Can you shoot the others, see if there has been any change?
So Peter, do you want me to move to the other two? The board might have more questions after we go through the two.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So I, I just want to say, I know that it's a little more difficult when the chair is remote, but everyone should be directing their questions and responses to the chair.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a little bit of a different situation here, but it seems to be moving along.
Yep, it is. So this is the Belmont, Washington District. And you may recall, when the board first started talking about the potential districts, the, this area, which is IBC, was not included. And it was suggested, maybe we should add that and make that all contiguous. As Peter's pointed out, right now, if we, if the town adopted all three of these as they're figured, we would be substantially over what's required. And that's not necessarily what, what the town's looking to do. We, we need to comply. We want to get the zoning adopted. So again, Peter and I were talking and thought, and Peter suggested, let's maybe take IBC back out of there. And there are some solid reasons for doing that. This is a thriving business. It would like to grow. I mean, again, based on conversations I've had in the past with the operations manager, what's hindering them right now is sewer. And maybe at some point, you know, Brockton might open up and let us tie into their sewer there. But it's a thriving business, and it wouldn't hurt to remove that from the district. Any-
Sophie, you have to know on that, when you mentioned the Brockton sewer, that's because it's, this is industrial use and our, our smaller stormwater sewer system in the Queeza area does not support industrial waste.
Correct. And-
But at the same time, that's, there are no discussions in concert with any Brockton sewer possibilities as far as what we're discussing right now.
Right. And in fact, the sewer, I think maybe since the last time we spoke, I checked with the DPW. So the sewer ends just before IBC to the west, the southwesterly properties. But there is sufficient capacity that the sewer main could be extended up and along this district. And again, adding additional capacity where you have it, adding additional flow is positive for the system. for the system, it keeps the system healthy, and also it generates more money for the enterprise fund, which benefits all of the properties that are in the district.
Yeah, board members, do you have any suggestions for this zone?
Well, the question is, if I understood, is that as a benefit for this business is not to include it, because then no one will try to come and buy the property and make them move, what is something that the town is interested in keeping?
Yep.
And if we subtract that area, we still comply, right, with the three districts?
Yes, yes. And probably with two.
Okay, if there are no further board member comments here, we could move on to Washington North.
So in this district, what Peter suggested is that we eliminate the parcels that are now townhouses on the easterly side. And again, part of the reason for that is they're townhouses, they're occupied, they're owner units of housing, and again, the likelihood that that would actually be redeveloped is probably pretty small.
Yeah, and imagine, even if they were, then who knows, the rental, the rental payment could be as much as, like a mortgage payment anyways, right, so it'd just be better just leaving those as is.
And even though it looks like there's a lot of available land there, you can see the wetland system here, and it shows here, I think it's more extensive than that, these maps are not definitive.
What do the other board members think about eliminating just that entire, that entire eastern side of Washington Street, to just remain consistent, assuming we have the, still, we still have the sufficient numbers, which we should have?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just curious why eliminating this but not eliminating Avalon, just the, I mean, it's half of one, what is it, six of one, half a dozen of the other, so what would be the justification?
Well, except that, yeah, Avalon is, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was going to go back to that.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Some of the thinking here was that Avalon being maybe one of the more expensive properties by assessed value in town is unlikely to be rebuilt soon, which would.
I have a question.
Yeah, I just want to answer Mickey, which Mickey, in a way, sort of eliminates, kind of, I guess, not eliminates, but it kind of brings down like the immediately buildable units that were kind of, could allow under the new bylaw. We're not, we're not kind of designing this to maximize, you know, development over the next 10 to 20 years, and if we, I think the way I look at it, if we were looking to maximize development, which I'm not going to do, but then maybe we would make our own bylaws, not just follow a requirement that the state made up one day.
Which is a good point.
I don't have a problem with that, I was just curious that why eliminate one and not the other, because they both are apartment developments in town.
I mean, you, you, Peter, and I think, it's the 50, the 20, we need to be careful with the 25 contiguous acres.
Oh, I'm not suggesting it, I was just wondering, just why the one and not the other, that's just my question.
Yep, just because Avalon is unlikely to be raised and rebuilt on anytime soon.
My question is to you, is why do we care if that will be developed or not developed? All we are asked by the state is to put a bylaw forward that meets their requirement, period. If they can develop or not develop, it's not my problem at this point.
Well, I think it is our problem, I mean, it's all of our problem, and it's the people from Foundry Street have expressed their views, that it is part of their, they feel like it's their neighborhood problem as well as their community problem, and I think a lot of other residents might feel like it is, it is their issue, just like it's ours, because we all live in town, so we're trying to find.
Well, if someone buys that and develops something, it's their right to do it. You want to reduce the area to give only what we are required, that's okay, but I will stop there, whatever you.
Okay, well, I mean, it's an interesting point to bring up now, and maybe you have a different idea about how we would think about which of these lots to keep with our zones?
So, Peter, can I ask Amos to, could you clarify what you're thinking? Because I think I know what you're saying, but I want to make sure I do.
Yeah, ask a question.
So I'm not sure if what you're saying is we shouldn't or should take out Avalon, or, I'm not quite sure what you're saying.
Well, we need, we need to comply to what we are required. We have three districts with certain acreage that we have selected, and all we need to do is to figure out how to comply, period, and that's it.
I think you and Peter are saying the same thing.
Yeah, and, okay, so, that's what I'm saying. So if you need to take, if you need to, if you need to take Avalon, and that decreases this district to something that doesn't match, where we need to comply, that's not good.
Right, right, so that's something.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's, and I, that's what Peter was saying too, right?
And if they can, if they were going to tear Avalon down and develop something else, it's not at this point, a point of discussion. Same thing with the condos in front of Roach Brothers.
Yeah.
Peter, reply back?
Yep, okay, go ahead, Joanne.
I agree with Amos, but also I think that if there are existing developments in the community that the community likes, then I think it, I think it would make sense for us to remove those, so that if in the future they do want to be redeveloped, they won't necessarily be able to be redeveloped, if that makes sense.
Are there examples on the map that we just looked at, which, that you're picking up specifically?
So, so like Avalon or those townhouses that you're talking about, I mean, if those are already there and the community supports them, then putting an overlay on those areas is kind of suggesting that in the future it could be redone into something else. I would rather focus on areas, yeah, I would rather focus on areas where, where we can come to consensus in the community on where we could actually put this, should it come to fruition, without, you know, people feeling too uncomfortable about it. I think anyhow, the conversation's going to be uncomfortable, but.
I think we look at it a couple different ways, right? So we, so we kind of looked at, one is like the probability of, of one of those lots being repurposed, and I think Avalon has probably the lowest probability of anything out there, so I can see some of your concerns about like, would they like it the way it is, but I don't, you know, even if, if somehow a developer decided to raise Avalon and apply this bylaw to it, you just end up with Avalon all over again. I don't even know how, you know, what the difference would be, so just, that's why that just seems so improbable to me. Do you, do you understand like that, that part of it?
Yeah, no, I totally agree with you, but I think it just kind of goes back to a little bit of Mickey's point, like if you want to remove the townhouses from, you know, that northern plot that's being looked at, then you might as well remove perhaps the Avalon site as well too, and instead focus the area on like that industrial warehouse section, if the numbers work out. I would rather see it that way.
Okay, so that's, that is maybe, the way I look at it, that's saying, I would like to see that industrial warehouse repurposed to, to multifamily under the new state, state requirement, is that, is that, and I think the way I was looking at it was like, I'd like to see a, like a commercial use continue as well, so I look at it a little bit differently.
Yeah, so Peter, if I heard you correctly, and it sounds like a conversation I wanted to have, it, it sounds like what you're saying is, again, let's, let's develop the, let's define the districts that we need to, to comply with the state mandate, and then at some point in the future, the board can think about maybe smaller density, or smaller multifamily zoning in other areas where it would make sense, and it could actually be developed, but at a smaller, not, not the scale that the state's requiring.
Correct.
Oh.
In a process that we have a little more control over, like we have preferred in the first.
Yep.
Yeah, do what this mandate doesn't allow us to do.
Yeah.
That is to keep what we want to do in this town.
Yep. Yeah, so I guess thanks for having seen that, maybe for the, you know, some of those new changes for the first time, maybe we can really bring any other ideas to the next meeting, and get, Stephanie and staff will run the numbers, and then we'll be really close to seeing if we should eliminate a little more, or if we need to add anything back.
Yep.
But I think it's pretty set that those properties that we discussed in the Foundry Street District, like Target and the Big Y Plaza, are not going to go back in. And very, and, you know, in my, in my opinion, really, and the, the large commercial industrial lot, which has, would alleviate most of the concerns of the Foundry Street neighborhood.
Peter, it, it doesn't make sense for Stephanie maybe to put some numbers with the options of subtraction in each one of these districts, and what will make sense for us to propose to meet the requirements?
Yes, I think that's what Peter was just saying, and yes, I'm taking notes on that.
Yeah, we can, and I'm not sure if the models will allow Stephanie just to put a value on each lot, and we'll just kind of start playing, playing add and subtract, but she's going to run the models based on what we've already talked about, and then we can look at some other options from there if we need to.
Yep.
Is that maybe?
Yes, we can do that. And so the next meeting, February 12th, is, we had scheduled to review and finalize the proposed district, so I can have all of that, I can get, actually get that out to the board members ahead of the meeting, Peter. We can't, we can't talk amongst ourselves, but people can certainly direct questions to me, and I can answer those, but you'll have it ahead of time and be better versed for the, the meeting and discussion on the 12th.
Do we want to just all do that meeting, just make it in person only?
That one is in person only, because it's at Frothingham Hall, and they don't have the ability to do the. Oh, sorry, sorry. February 12th is here in the Corona Room, and yes, then February 26th meeting is at Frothingham, so it will, we'll still be able to do it.
Okay, so let's keep the 12th hybrid then, just to allow.
Yes, yes, we will, yeah. Yeah, we'll absolutely do that, so I can, I can get that for everybody.
I have something to highlight, I am a proponent, I'm happy that there are three districts, and I think in your explanations to the public, I would like to highlight two issues, first, that by having three districts, you are possibly incentivizing the development in three different places on the, on the town.
Yep.
Second, you are balancing the traffic and the load of the traffic through the town if these developments happen, and that is a positive that arise from the fact that we have three districts, and I agree, I think Peter said that, or you said that, we don't want to exceed what we are required from the, from the state, but meet as close as possible. Okay?
Yes, yeah, Peter, that.
Yeah, that's great, nice, nice work there, I'll summarize everything.
Okay, so I have one other thing I'd like to say, Peter, and then you have someone who, from the public who wants to ask a question.
Yep.
So Suzanne, the meeting on the 12th, is that the meeting we're supposed to be reviewing?
No.
So right now, the board does not have four members who have attended all the meetings, and three of the members have missed more than, have missed two meetings, and the Mullen Rule only allows you to miss one, so at the February 12th meeting, we're actually doing a review, it's, we re-noticed the meeting, and we're going to be doing a complete review of what's been discussed. Fortunately, it's been a lot of the same thing, but with progress and some changes along the way, so I think we'll do a good job of wrapping that up, so that all members can vote, are eligible to vote at the final meeting, so it's really important that everyone be at that meeting on the 12th.
Yeah, so we have some more time for this, but we have some more work to do, and we need to really, yeah, get it done.
So Peter, we have someone who's from the public who wants to speak again.
Okay, just go one at a time, please, so that we can all hear you well.
Yes, Denise Higgins for New Pondway.
Can you speak up, because that doesn't amplify, it only records it for.
So I want to speak to the most recent comment about Avalon. I know that our district is in favor of keeping Avalon in. I spoke to a lot of communities who came out of the gate when this rezoning for MBTA was, was given to the, to the municipalities. In keeping Avalon in this scenario is taking credit for what we have, and we should take credit for it, there are communities that have done that. I don't know that it's necessarily the goal of Easton to necessarily be the community that provides the housing. I totally agree that we provide what, what has been mandated to us, and that the rest of the planning come within and come locally, such as you suggested, that, you know, we can do better in, in Easton in terms of sitting down and deciding where our density and our, our new construction and dense housing should be. This is a restriction that unfortunately we have to comply with. I would make this a pure mathematical equation, and when we get to 50 acres that we're required to do, 25 being contiguous and so forth, that we stop at that. That's our, that's our onus, that's the liability that we have, and any more than that.
That's what we're doing, yeah, we might have to go over a little bit, just to make sure, give us a little leeway with this, the state formula, but that is always too informed.
I get it, but I, I don't see any reason for us to hypothetically give them 68 acres, or 72, or whatever, I'm just, I just want to say that once we're in compliance, I think that we've done our thing.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, that's where we are.
Anyone else?
Hi, Del Carstner, 21 South Street. I just wanted to say thank you to the board, and to Peter and to Stephanie, who came to the meeting that we had last Thursday night, we had about 30-some folks there, and in addition to Peter and Stephanie there in their representative capacities, we also had Connor Reed there, police chief, fire chief, DPW chief, Dottie Fulgenetti, Kristen Kennedy, and it's an extraordinary thing when you think about just the access there, so I want to thank everybody for making themselves available to talk to our folks, we had 30-some folks there who were able to convey their concerns about traffic and everything else, and just, as I understand the process, the general idea is to have input, so when you guys are considering, you know, the factors and the criteria, so it's very much appreciated that, so thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Mary Landry, 15 Paquana Cat. When the board considers what to include in the Eastman District, my personal thought was to include the industrial lot, rather than the four or five individual smaller lots, because then you're, you are more likely to end up with one cohesive development, where the flow of the traffic is thoughtfully considered, you know, and, you know, style-wise, and, you know, something attractive overall.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from, but just, if you're looking to minimize traffic, I personally feel like there's more probability that, that industrial commercial one could, could be built over the next five years into multifamily, so I'll leave that, you know, that's up to you, I mean, I'm not, not like a, I can't, I can't see the future, so it's just my one person's perspective on that.
That's all it is, it's just a opinion and a perspective suggestion.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Stephanie, is that all we have there for the public comment?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, did anyone else like to discuss MBTA zoning anymore tonight or should we move on to the rest of our agenda?
I think we're ready to move on, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's move on.
Let's move.
Thanks, everyone, as always.
No, we need to go back to...
Up there?
Oops, wait a minute, that's wrong.
Yep, next we have...
Old Forge Commons.
Yep, we have Old Forge Commons, Architectural Review Lot Number 10.
Yes. Oops, wait a minute, that's the presentation again. You know, just as we got used to doing Zoom meetings, now we have to get used to doing hybrids.
Oh, yeah. It might not be the best, best E-CAP product that's ever been produced, but we'll get it, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing okay.
We need, we need to figure out what will convince them to come here. What do you need, Peter?
Wait a minute, I have it right here.
Did we make a motion to continue a public hearing on...
Oh, yeah, we need to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the MBTA.
Wolf.
Second kid.
Okay, all in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Zigman, aye.
And Deshaun, aye.
Okay, so Mr. Humphrey is not with us tonight. Oh, he is, okay, well, oh, there he is. Sorry.
I think I'm here.
Are you?
Yeah, I think so.
Hey, all right. Okay.
The public.
I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, guys. Bill Humphrey, Humphrey Builders. This is for plan review, this is 65 Old Forge Lane. And we have front elevation, all the side elevations, et cetera. Basically, I like this design, this is a, it's sort of, it's sort of, it has the metal roofs, et cetera. This, these, the windows here are going to be black, which we've got three homes in there right now that have the black trim on the outside, which looks nice, high roof lines. The only thing is I have a slight change. I was talking with Suzanne. Suzanne, you're there, correct?
Yes.
So this is the, let's see, this is the old plan here, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the only difference is I'm moving the bulkhead. If you guys see where the, see here where the bulkhead is being located?
All right, let's see, on the rear?
On the left, if you look at the front elevation, on the left side, you'll see the bulkhead.
And it's relocated over here.
Okay, thank you.
On the opposite side.
I'm relocating that and the only other thing I'm doing, change, right where you have that right there, I'm adding an awning window to the, this, the closet for the primary bedroom is getting a three by two awning window, which you'll see on the same side, you'll see those two little awning windows on that, yeah, right there. I'm putting one of them over in that, yes, right in that area there, I'm adding an awning window. That's the only changes that I'm making. I know they're minor, but I just wanted to bring them up. The homeowner wanted to add those at our last plan review and that's the only changes they want to do. So they want to put the bulkhead on that same side and they want to add an awning window to the primary closet area for more, because the primary closet, it's a big walk-in closet, it doesn't have any natural light, so we're just trying to get some natural light in there. And that's it, everything else is the same.
Okay, then what do you have? Do you have, is it vertical siding on the, like, the first floor? And then do I see horizontal siding on the, on the front?
Yeah, so you have the board and batten on the front main gable over the front door. So we're going with the board and batten, which you see a lot of that in there that I do on the, on the large gables in that area. And then we have over the garage doors, and what else, well, over the garage doors, that's a metal roof. It's not called out there for some reason, but that's a metal, it's just a standing seam, metal roof over that. But all the garage doors are the carriage house design and the lights you'll see over the garage doors are all, they're all the same in there. That's what I created and all the roof, roofs are the same color, they're all black colored roofs. But that's, yeah, so what I'm doing is doing a little metal roof in there and I'm doing some of the board and batten on the front elevation. Everything else is the typical four-inch siding. The vinyl siding that I've been doing in all the other houses, the other eight I've built in there already.
What about the, what about the trim? What, which, which of the products that we've talked about is the trim?
So on the front, on the front of the farmer's porch, Peter, the front of the farmer's porch, it's all PVC. The corner boards are all PVC, the plastic corner boards that I, they're all the same. Every corner board in there is the same. The only difference is the front porches I do in solid ASIC trim and the decking is all done in the, the solid decking, the PVC decking, the composite decking, I should say, with the hidden fasteners. They're all the same, all the same turmeric in there.
But then like the trim up along the roof is what?
Metal, metal. So all that's aluminum. All the upper high areas are all aluminum.
And is there going to be a railing on this one or not?
No railing, no, no. I, people, so the most steps that we have in there is what you see right there, two steps and a platform. Nobody wants any railings, nobody wants a lot of stairs. Unfortunately, the water table is seven feet plus, so there's no, and obviously we have sewer in there, so there's no mound systems, et cetera, but the water table in all these lots is seven feet plus. So with that there, we're able to put the foundations deeper into the ground and that's why you don't see any of these high foundation buildup, so.
And how many square foot of living space is this one?
This one's 2,300.
Okay, so that's, that's still kind of keeping it somewhat reasonable, right? I mean, people build bigger homes in Easton than 2,300, right? So I mean, yeah.
Yeah, true. There's, there's two homes in there so far that are the maximum, which is the 2,800. That's Lot 11 and 16. But most people are staying in around 2,000 to 2,400. That seems to be the, the good fit in there. That's what, I don't, I haven't done any smaller, but I do have some coming up to you guys. I got three more that are sold. That'll be coming before you guys in the next month or so. But I've got some ranches that are 1,700, I've got some other houses coming before you that are like this here, that are only 1,800 square feet. So, you know, that's, that seems to be the, people are looking at that and it's price point too. So 1,700 to about 2,300 is doing real well.
Yeah, right. So you want to look at these and say, oh, wow, those are, you know, those, those are inexpensive homes. I'm not saying you build inexpensive homes, I'm saying like, oh, those are like, yeah, super affordable or anything, but they're within the, the range of what homes sell far in Easton, especially like something brand new. Yeah, they're coming in at the reasonable end, right, yeah, of that spectrum.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, right now in the town of Easton with what prices are at and we, we are a, we're a great town, everybody wants to come to Easton. It's a great, I've been here for 40 some odd years and, for instance, houses that are, I know of other builders in town and there's a house in town right now that just sold its 4,000 square feet. I'm not telling you where it is, but just sold for 1.8. So Easton is sort of becoming that town, it's, it's getting higher numbers. Land prices, there's no land, as you know, this land is gone, so if land is gone, prices are going up and that's unfortunate, but that's the way of the world, so. But this, this is for Easton, it's very affordable with the market the way it is right now. You get interest rates at six, low sixes right now, which were, six months ago were up more than that, high sevens. But with high interest rates where they are right now, I will be by summertime. So I broke, the first house I started building in May, by this coming May, I will be more than halfway sold out, which that's what we were hoping for when we designed this and worked together with this and everything's going great. So we're real happy with, my wife and I, with the sales. So we're going to be probably by summertime, we'll may, may have four lots left, which is great. I'm really excited about it and it's, I, and if you guys haven't been up there, I know you've been up there, Peter, but it's really, it's beautiful up there. I'm really happy with what we're creating up there.
Is there any other board members? Do you have any comments or questions there?
Yeah, the affordable units, when you are making, making those and what are the sizes for those?
So the first affordable is house number 11, which is going to be coming before you in the next couple of months. Maybe even sooner than that, probably within 30 days, you're gonna, you're gonna see the affordable first affordable. So the company that I'm working with right now, that the town, with Stephanie helped me out with this, with...
Maureen O'Kagan.
Yeah, who is awesome. So it's, I'm, it's sort of, so with interest rates, the way they are right now, unfortunately, when they went high, the numbers came down and now the interest rate's coming down, it's fortunate that the house price can go up and you get a little more house. So it's going to be lot number eight is the first affordable and I'm building that one first and that's the four-bedroom one. So it's a four-bedroom, two-bathroom, it's somewhere, I, I, I think, I can't give you the square footage right now because we're almost done with the plans, but I don't have them. I'll have them shortly to give to Maureen. I can get the next meeting and the next house that I bring before you, I can give you a better square footage size on that, but I don't have it right now. But it imitates the houses that are in there, it has the 10 pitch roofs, carriage house doors, oversized windows, board and bat siding. It's, and, and it's, the house that's in there, it'll probably not be, the affordable won't be the smallest one in there because there are small ones that I am building in there. So you'll see the smaller ones coming in shortly. I'm lot number, I think it's lot number five. I'm bringing in a house that's right at 1,700 square feet. So the affordable, the first affordable is right in somewhere around there, but I don't have the exact square footage. Plan's not done, so I can't give you that number right now, I'm...
And the board did not require a four-bedroom. I mean, I, I don't, I can't think of a housing...
I have to do it, Stephanie. Stephanie, I, because Maureen told me, because I have four bedrooms and three bedrooms there, I have to do a four and I have to do a three.
Okay.
No, my, but, yeah, well, thank you, thank you for not...
That's unusual and I'm, I'm sure that will be...
Some discussion.
Something that someone will be very happy to get, so.
I'm just, I'm just concerned because when you're doing a four-bedroom and they, I have to follow sort of guidelines that she gives me, obviously, and I would rather see it be a three-bedroom and bigger rooms, but she's saying, no, you can go, I don't know, I, I have to follow.
You can always kind of loop us in there, yeah, if you kind of feel like something's getting a little attract, I just get us in the loop and Stephanie...
I would like, I would like to talk to you guys about that, if we can legally do that with Maureen. I'd rather see rooms bigger for a new family than smaller rooms to meet her, whatever she's saying I have to do, I don't know.
Yeah, she, she's the expert.
Yeah, yeah, that's what she does for work, yeah.
Okay, any other comments on this architectural review?
I'm okay, one second.
Harry, I don't think we've proposed any changes, so we could just...
Motion to approve? Motion to approve the lot 10 of the Old Forge Commons?
Kevin, aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Zigman, aye.
Deshaun, aye. Okay, that passes, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Yep, too.
Good night.
Good luck.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, now we have Weber Farm Retirement.
Okay, you want me to give the background on this? So...
Oh, I have to introduce it here. I think I'm being hybrid here, I'm missing the good jokes over there in person, but, okay. Weber Farm Retirement of Tripartite Lenders Agreement to be Replaced with Site Bond.
Okay, so this is before the board tonight. This is a request from Alan Andrunas, who is the proponent of Weber Farm. He is the person that holds the permit for it. He put up surety in the form of a tripartite agreement and a tripartite agreement is when the lender who's lending the construction money to the developer, they withhold an amount that's equal to the cost to construct the road based on our road cost estimate. So the developer gets all the other money as he works through the project. If he does work and we reduce the amount that we need to hold, he'll get money back from the lender, but they, they, they are the ones that hold the rest of the funds until the road is done and we, and the board releases it. In this instance, he, the, the agreement, I think, is...
Yeah, the Pennsylvania agreement.
Yeah, well, this is who they're going with. I can't remember the name of the bank.
It's an insurance company.
But what they, they, they no longer want to hold that money. So what the Andrunas brothers have done is they have a bond, which is another form of surety that basically assures that the road will be completed. They, they actually pay for this, they pay for it on an ongoing basis until it's actually, the road's complete and we, the board votes to release it. So this is just a vote, it's more of an administrative, but it's a vote to accept the site bond in exchange for the tripartite agreement. So you'd be releasing the tripartite agreement and then accepting the site bond as the surety that's going to be held by the town.
And why, why the board needs to approve this? Because we approved the comment?
You know, administratively, I was like, you know, I, I was not comfortable not coming to the board and asking that you were comfortable with this. It is an administrative function.
Okay, so if there is no more question, I would like to put a motion forward.
A second, Wolf.
Any further discussion? No, okay, all in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Zigman, aye.
Deshaun, aye.
All right.
Okay, it's like the last item here, we have, well, last business, we have meeting minutes, January 10th.
I was not in the meeting, I read the minutes.
Yep.
Motion to, motion to accept the minutes?
Well, close the door, you can't close it.
Second kid.
Okay, all in favor? Deshaun, aye. Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Kid, aye.
Wolf, aye.
All right, Deshaun, aye. I saw it shutting down there, I'm not sure who was shutting down, but...
Someone...
Yep, okay, sounds like there's more excitement there in person at the town offices. All right, other business, we have a share report, nothing too exciting, except just the MBTA meetings have been taking up a lot of evenings, well, for both of us, but especially Stephanie. Stephanie's done some on her own, so she's, she's been very busy. Stephanie, are you still there? Do you have any updates?
I am still here, yep. No, my only update is, Peter, you're not missing any good jokes.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No, the laughing is, I think, more just because it's a hybrid meeting and the first time that we've, only the second time, right? It's just interesting doing it this way.
No, I know, yeah, I understand. Okay, well, that's all there. Does anyone else have anything to bring up? That's not too, that we'd like to talk about? No? Okay, then we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second kid.
Kevin.
All in favor?
Kevin, aye.
Zigman, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Yep, and Deshaun, aye. Now let's say that, I like voting this way better than just saying everyone's last name. We used to do it this way and it's, it's still very clear. I mean, we wait our turn and we say aye or nay and it works, so. Thanks, everyone. I'll see you later. I'll see you later.
Good night, everyone.
All right, Peter, thank you.